Good evening. I'd like to call the Waterloo Schools Board of Education meeting to order and ask that you join me in a moment of silence. And would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and now Astor will read our mission statement.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you, Astor. The next item on our agenda is information from individuals and delegations, and I would ask our board secretary, I had to read.
I'm over here, I am not Lyle.
I'll ask Secretary Arndor if there were any comments received for this evening's meeting.
No, we did not receive any comments today.
Okay, thank you. And just for our general public, I believe that we plan to, at this point, allow the public back into our meetings. They're always welcome to submit written comments, but to be here at our next meeting in January.
Correct.
Provided that all goes well.
Provided, yes, yes.
We've learned to not make plans too far out, so, great, okay, thank you very much. Then the first item on our agenda for action tonight is Item A, and this is a board celebration. It's a donation from the Cedar Valley Medical Specialists, and I would like to ask Jeff Frost, our Executive Director of Professional Education, to come forward. But while he's doing that, I will put the motion on the table, and the recommended motion is that the Board of Education accepts with gratitude the donation of $150,000 from Cedar Valley Medical Specialists in support of the Waterloo Career Center's health careers programming.
Some move, second.
Thank you, everybody wants a piece of that.
Come on, what's your name on this one?
And discussion, welcome, welcome, Mr. Frost. I look forward to hearing about this, I've been seeing it on social media, it's exciting.
Very exciting. I'm here representing on behalf of Cedar Valley Medical Specialists. Their generous, amazing donation, the largest in the history of the Waterloo Career Center, of $150,000 to the Career Center for use as needed. And we're going to use it to expand and continue to build upon our health careers pathway. In fact, we have purchased a Cendaver cadaver, which is synthetic endeavor, or synthetic cadaver, and we've also purchased an amb- let's say that, like, yeah, really. And we've also purchased an ambulance simulator, which is really pretty awesome, too. So if you ever get out there, I would take you on a quick tour up to the health careers wing and take a look at that there. So I guess my job is officially to hand this document over to, I'm guessing, the board president. I don't know, is there anything that Jane wants to say or add? It was an amazing day. The money was awesome, but the message from Cedar Valley Medical Specialists doctors and their CEO, Giliari, was amazing, too. And then, and the fact that they want to continue to work on internships, and they really want to get our students in to experience what they're doing in their field there. So I thought it was an amazing day, I mean, obviously, the money is great, but I think the message is even stronger of the collaboration that is coming down the road.
The only thing I would add on this, Cedar Valley Medical Specialists, even though they are gifting the check right now, I would tell you that they have really been our partners for quite some time. I remember Kathy Young and I going to the, one of their board meetings, oh my goodness, it's been a number of years ago, when we first were getting started, maybe before we even launched, and we had gotten a matching grant for, I think, $50,000, and we had raised 40,000 of it, and so we needed $10,000, and we needed it very quickly, or we weren't going to get the $50,000 matching grant. So Kathy said, "I know where we can go, I know where they'll be supportive." So we went to Cedar Valley Medical Specialists one night, and we talked with them, and they gratefully, you know, gave the $10,000 to finish out the matching grant. And since that time, they have been very helpful, they've helped us with lots of things, even, maybe not even, you know, the Waterloo Career Center, with the vision to learn the glasses that we give away. They have helped us with that, they have donated glasses, they've donated money, they gave us enough money for 250 pairs of glasses. They actually did a research study along with that, they commissioned this research study, and they've done, I mean, they've just done so many things, and now partnering with the Waterloo Career Center in such a big way. So I guess I just wanted you to know that this is not, even though we're celebrating this wonderful gift of dollars today, money, but they've been with us for a long time, so we're grateful.
And can you just remind our public just what our numbers look like as we're moving into, as we move into next year, and people are enrolling, students are enrolling into the Career Center? What does that look like? I didn't know, there was quite a number, but.
Yeah, thank you, you teed me up for a great, great comment. You know, when we started in the fall of 2016, we launched with 37 kids, and since that time, we have just grown and grown and grown and grown. And so we're at, this year, I believe, we will be just shy of 1,000 students, but we were slated to go well over 1,000 this year, but then COVID happened, and the way the concurrent enrollment is, students who were on virtual could not do the courses over there. That was just a, you know, that's just the way that it worked out for this year, but there, some students are actually coming back this semester, so we'll be excited about that. So we'll be over 1,000, or just shy, I think it's at 970 for this year, but we'll be well over 1,000 next year. And our enrollment, since you asked, is growing also from our neighboring districts. We are now drawing students from seven districts, and so they come at no cost to them, the district, we work it out with the district, and they can come and take the courses, and at no charge to the students. And so, and they don't open enroll here, they just come for that portion of the class, and then they go back to their district. So it really works great, and also, seven public school districts and three private schools as well. So we're drawing from 10 different districts beyond Waterloo. It is, yep, it's really, yeah, it's really growing, and so, and I was just listening, I happen to have, one of my kids had a birthday this weekend, and so I had a few little friends over, and I was listening to them, and they were talking about what they wanted to be, and some of them were actually talking about careers that are connected to the Career Center. So one said, "I really am so interested in physical therapy, and so it'll be really great because I can go into," and we have that program, nursing, anything medical, so it was just kind of neat to hear 13, going to be 14-year-olds talk about the Career Center, because that wasn't necessarily the case five years ago. You would talk to kids, and they're like, "Well, what is that, have you heard of it?" "No, not really," they've heard of it now. So, yeah, thanks for asking that question, I appreciate that.
And then, piggybacking on this, specifically for the health programs there, if you would highlight, like, what health programs we do have, and how many, you know, enrollment and capacity?
Sure. We currently have, of course, we started with our pre-nursing program, which has a capacity of approximately 60 students each semester, or 120 students for the year. And then, and that's based on just the DIY state ratios that we have to keep for clinicals in our labs. We have also added for this year, we have added emergency management with a focus on EMT right away, physical therapy. We've also added biomedical lab technician program, and then we've also added a anatomy and physiology course, which is a high-level course that, if you're going into the health career fields, you need to take, and so students can get this course completed while they're still in the high school on the Waterloo dime, instead of having a student or parent have to pay for that there. So those are the programs, but really, the reality is, really, you can choose any health career and find your path to that, or that pathway through our programs out there. Just through the Intro to Health professions, medical terminology, anatomy and physiology alone will get you a good beginning into where you need to get to.
And then the kind of popularity of those programs?
So the beginning programs typically start out small, and then we see them jump quite a bit. I know, like, from the first semester numbers, even to the second semester numbers in our new programs, we've seen a doubling of the numbers there. In fact, we had to add an extra section of Intro to Health professions and medical terminology because of the growth in the new programs is causing those introductory programs to have more, need, a need for those students to have opportunities to take those courses. So if you want a roughhouse number, I think right now we have 16 students in anatomy and physiology, which we were told is not a number we would get to right away, but we are at that now. Biomedical lab technician, I think we have 11 students for next semester for one class. It's a program where the instructor's on for just one block, and then it started with, I think, three first semester, and it's up to 11 for second. So the growth numbers, the growth is there, and we know that it just word of mouth, and once they get in, see facilities and things like that, it will continue to grow. Capacity in all those programs would be 20 for three blocks, or 60 total students during that timeframe.
With the changes in scheduling next year, do you foresee more kids utilizing the WCC who would not right now because of the time going back and forth?
Absolutely, so what Stacy's alluding to is we're going to a four-block schedule. Right now, we have three 90-minute blocks with two right away in the morning, and then a kind of a large break in the afternoon, in the middle of the day, and then we come back for the PM third block. We're going to go to a balanced 70-minute schedule with two periods in the first half, two periods in the second half of the day, and that's going to allow us to offer more courses, and also the opportunity for students to get, have more opportunities to get into their programs. The reason for this was because students, typically, the athletes had trouble getting out for third block, band and other programs have trouble getting out for first block, and then if, depending where that program would fall, or that course yet you need would fall, you may not be able to get into its second block. So by balancing and rotating the schedule through, we're able to get more students through and into programs, and deeper into those programs over the sequence there. So it's really a win all the way around, and it will help absolutely build enrollment out there. In fact, the key part of that is, it actually aligns with the East and West High School schedules. So first and second periods at East and West align with Block 1, third and fourth, Block 2, fifth and sixth, and so on and so forth. So the alignment there just makes it easier in itself.
And I did want to thank you, Tara, for broadcasting that live, because that was, I couldn't get there, and it was fun to listen to the interviews and live, and so thank you for doing that.
All right, thanks, everyone, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bye.
All right, so we graciously accept this donation from Cedar Valley Medical Specialists. All those in favor of the approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those, good job, thanks, Lyle, and those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. I love board celebrations, yay.
Well, we should have told Jeff he can't come back unless he brings money again.
Right, unless he brings another big check, all right, so. The next item on our agenda is Item B, and this is for information only. This is regarding the extended leave related to COVID-19 absences and other leaves, and I will bring forth Dr. Botchway, Kingsley Botchway, our Chief Officer for Human Resources and Equity, to give us a little more background on this.
Yeah, so just briefly, this was due to the expiration of the federally mandated Family First Coronavirus Response Act on December 31st, and so we've spent a better part of the month of December, a little bit of November, trying to figure out what we could do to effectively have something in place for our employees. Looking at other districts, unfortunately, some of the districts said they weren't doing anything at all, and then at the very end, there were a couple of districts that said they were doing some compilation of a couple of different things, and so we wanted to make sure we had that information as well, and then we made a decision that I thought, looked at the data, and provided opportunities for people to still have leave in place.
Board members, do you have questions for Kingsley?
My only one would be, is if things change, then will we be, will we be looking at it again if, with the new legislation and all that? If it changes, will you just go right back?
That's a part of the conversation, so we're still tracking. So we have to retroactively go back in the case the legislation doesn't get passed. Last thing that I would mention as well, I just forgot, is we want to make sure that you're just aware of all the different things. We were just talking about this in our meeting today, that we do for our employees, because I think sometimes we don't come to the board, it's just matter, business as usual, to make sure that we have that. And that was something else that we put in here, just as far as other types of leaves, because it is a cost of the district, and we want to make sure that you know this is being stewards of the district's resources. And so we did, through our focus groups, and hopefully the plan for our next, this year's focus groups as well, but last year's focus groups, we included parental leave, which, again, was more from the standpoint of wanting to expand it for adoption and other things, emergency leave, and so for those situations where, right now, a car hits somebody's house, that may be used for emergency leave, and an additional personal leave for sick days. And so we heard resounding from the committee that they'd like to see sick days changed into a personal day, and so we made that change this year. So it's happening already, but, you know, again, we don't necessarily always toot our own horn, and I just wanted to make sure, as we're talking about other leaves, you knew that as well.
Thank you for pointing out that distinction, I appreciate that.
Can I just ask real quick, I'm looking at the personnel absences, can I, can you just differentiate what may have changed just slightly from December 31st to now current, going into the current? If there, were there any slight changes or any big changes from it?
Yeah, the difference was, was that we had, and if you see here, we spent approximately about $450,000 on this kind of unfounded leave that, you know, was provided. I think we got about $30,000 back by not having to send that information, or not having to, we'd not have to get reimbursed for FICA, but it's a substantial amount of money that we spent in regards to it. So we looked at everybody's leave balance as related to personal leave and saw, okay, what would this affect? And we built the policy on those that had no leave at all. So for many of our folks, for the greater majority of 90% of our people, if not more, it's actually probably more like 95%, they have enough leave to not only eclipse COVID leave, but almost take them out for some months. So with that in mind, and knowing how we utilize leave in general, we felt like just using this to cover, using your own personal sick leave to cover the time that you're out, and in addition to, if you don't have any leave right now, we actually had one person that triggered this, you would get an additional five days of that leave.
Got it, okay.
And this was not COVID caught at school, right? That isn't a criteria for it, it's COVID.
Any, any.
Anywhere, anyplace, okay, yes, COVID contracted, I can't think of the word.
Right, correct.
Thank you.
So if a person has sick leave built up, and can you differentiate between the COVID sick leave and their personal sick leave?
You would use your own personal sick leave.
Okay.
So that was, that was what, when we went back to the data and said, about 95% of our people have a lot of sick leave built up. And we base it on people that didn't have leave and new employees, in particular, those that went on maternity leave, and that may have expended all their sick leave prior to the December 31st, wanting to make sure we gave them something, so it wasn't like, figure it out for yourself.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, the next item on our agenda is our consent agenda, which this evening consists of five items. Item C, which are the minutes of the December 14th, 2020 regular board meeting. Item D, which are personal appointments and adjustments. Item E, which are bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings. Item F, which is the RJ McElroy Trust Excellence in Education Grants. And item G, which is a donation from the RJ McElroy Trust. Can I have a motion to place those items on the table?
Second.
Thank you, Sue and Jesse. And are there any items that board members wish to have removed?
F and G, please.
F and G, okay. Then all those in favor of approving items C, D, and E, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to item F, and that is that the Board of Education accepts and acknowledges with gratitude the RJ McElroy Trust Excellence in Education Grants in the amount of $6,294.40 for the 2020-2021 school year. Thank you, Sue.
Second.
Thank you, and discussion, Sue?
Well, I just pulled these, and I think we could probably put them together, I don't know protocol, but.
Yeah, you can.
Just to, just be appreciative to the RJ McElroy Trust and to get the information and our thank yous back to the appropriate people, because they, they pay for things that are just unexpected costs that just help a lot. And I just want to thank them for just their continued partnership with giving to our district and our students. So that was all.
Thank you, Sue, and I just want to give a little background to the, and maybe a little shout out to Central Rivers, because they help administer this Excellence in Education Grant. They accept those grants and then divide them out, and they actually do the review process, which, again, really does help McElroy, since we're a fairly small but mighty staff on the trust. So anyway, I just want to tell Central Rivers we appreciate their help and time in that as well, so. Anything else? All right, then all those in favor of approving item F, the Excellence in Education Grants, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair abstains. Motion carried, thank you. And then also, we'll move right on to item G, which is for the Youth Emergency and Opportunity Fund, and that recommended motion is, the Board of Education accepts with gratitude this donation in the amount of $2,200 from the RJ McElroy Trust for the 2020-21 Youth Emergency Fund as presented.
So, second.
Thank you, both of you, and is there any discussion on this? This goes directly to buildings.
Just thank you again, yep.
Okay, I'll make sure the trustees know, so. All right, then all those in favor of approving the Youth Emergency and Opportunity Funds, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair abstains, and the reason I abstain is because I work for the McElroy Trust, so. Not because I don't support it, yeah, I thought, I should have said that with the first, with the first motion, pardon me. So with that, then, the motion carries, thank you, Pam. All right, that takes us to item H, which is on page 25, and this is just for information only, but this is the first reading of two board policy changes, and I will ask Tara Thomas, our Director of School and Community Relations, to come forward and discuss.
Thank you, I'm happy to entertain any questions or feedback.
Did it's, I just wondered for child abuse reporting, Tara, on the change from retake in every five years to three years, was that a mandate state level, or we just locally decided to do that?
Good question, I don't recall, but I know some of these updates were to align with the current IASB policy, so I'm guessing that's where the language came from. Pam, do you recall in that meeting?
It was, it was still five years.
For Stacy's, was it, okay.
Yeah, but just for reasons you said, we switched it.
Felt like it was better to go with three. Anything else on those two policies for Tara? All right, we'll stay right there, because we're moving on. The next item on our agenda then is item I, which is on page 28, and this is the second reading for this board policy change, and the recommended motion is, the Board approves the following policy employee records. Thank you, Sue, and a second?
Second.
Thanks, India, and discussion. We saw this in December, which feels like about a year ago.
It was, it was last year.
True. Are there any questions on this one? Okay, then seeing none, all those in favor of approving Policy 401.4 Employee Records, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to item J, which is the funding for the 2021-22 At-Risk Education Programs, and that recommended motion is, I have to get to the bottom of my sheet here, the Board of Education authorized the district's administration to submit a request to the School Budget Review Committee, or SBRC, in the amount of $3,744,814 for a modified supplemental amount, MSA, for the purpose of funding district at-risk programming for the 2021-22.
Some move.
Thank you, Sue, and a second, thanks, India. And I will turn this over to Michael Coughlin for some more information and background.
Can you hear me clearly?
Yep, I sure can.
Okay, this is a two-part funding mechanism that has been combined together under the MSA, but it's really a part that is just part of our formula of the supplemental at-risk funding, which is $517,810, and that's based on a formula of free and reduced lunch in grades 1 through 6, and total district enrollment. So every district gets supplemental waiting, and it's part of the regular funding formula, and state aid pays for part of it. The other part, the major part, is the modified allowable, modified allowable growth funding, which the majority of it is the expo building and program, and then if you look down below, it also consists of the credit recovery programs, after-school programs, and expo and the web C program, plus Big Brothers and family support workers. Those are all part of the modified allowable growth program that is funded by property tax. It is a local board control, local board decision, because there is no state aid that is, that supports this, and it's local control, because every district has a little bit different need for what they need for at-risk programs. Ours have been pretty extensive for many years, and this funding has been going on, it was going on when I started in this profession almost 40 years ago. So it's been around for a long time for districts to be able to fund special at-risk programs, to help where the board decided where they wanted to put money to address at-risk programs. So the way that the formula works is, the middle bullet is that our regular program district cost, which is our enrollment, $10,626, times the cost per pupil of $7,048, and that gives us a total, which you then take 5% of that, and 5% of that number is $3,744,814. In addition to that, the district has to contribute 20, an additional 25% of that number to get the full budget for the modified allowable growth. So the recommendation to raise the money necessary to fund this is the board decision to levy for property tax of that seven, or $3,744,814. And then the board, then the budget contributes another $1,248, and they also have the supplemental weighting of $517. So that total amount is our at-risk funding budget, and what needs to be approved by the board is the property tax dollar levy of $3,744,814. And that is estimated at, right at $1.36. Since I've been in the district, it's ranged from $1.30 to $1.36. It's been very consistent through many years. Is there any questions on that?
Well, Michael, I was wondering, for the 2046 is the number, where do you get that number of enrolled students in the budget year certified as returning dropouts and potential dropouts? How do you determine potential dropouts, and could those be counted twice? Just checking.
Well, I don't supply that number, it comes from the people that do the enrollment counting. And I don't know if Stephanie is there, would have any light on this, but I don't have the background to that number.
I can answer that. When I sat in Stephanie's chair, I used to do this, unless, I don't want to take it out. If you want to take a walk up, you can. So the number is 2046 at-risk students. It really is a dance, I would tell you. That number is, it's the number that fits the state's parameters, which doesn't make any sense, right? So when I was doing this, like, if we would say, hey, we're going to add all of the students who are, let's say we were looking at the students who were not proficient in, you know, K through 5, we're going to add them up, and. So if you put in a number that's too large, it gets flagged, you can't, you can't do that, if it's too small, you can't. So these, there, so there are certain things you can count, so it really is a state-guided number, but that. so it really is a state-guided number, but that is not the only number of students that we actually use the at-risk dollars for. So it is, it's, it's the number that fits the parameters that are given by the state, but it's not the number of, if you said, so you're telling us you have 2046 at-risk students? No, that's not what I'm telling you. That's the number that fits the parameters of the guy, of who you can count for the state's formula, but that's not who, that's not how we identify. The state's definition and our definition do not match.
Would there be more than?
There would be more, that we're, yes, yes, we are using, yes, yes, that number.
Because this would be just like 20% of the students, and I thought we'd probably have higher than that.
Yeah, that's exactly right. It is a relative description. It's, yep, if you, if it's, yep, if you look at all of the number, the students, and if we look at the students who we're serving, and there's lots of definitions of at-risk, right? So the state has a specific formula, and they're saying if they have this, 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 and so many, like, almost point, like, tallies or whatever, if you're looking at that. So you can do it that, that way. We do it a little bit broader. We, we serve a broader definition of students who need support.
Thank you.
So with that said, looking at the number for summer school and what we are potentially in the environment right now, that number could easily be much larger. And so that, with this estimate, is this a high number for estimation, or would this just be, again, in the middle, and just in hopes that we might stay there or not?
For the number of students or the number of amounts?
Of the amount.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah.
This year's summer school costs will be much higher.
Okay.
But we will have our ESSA dollars, the COVID relief number two.
Okay.
That just, those allocations are just coming in right now. So if you remember the last time we got, help me remember, it was 2.4 million, right? And then I think another half a million went to the, the private school, so 2.4. So we will get significantly more than that, and we will allocate some of, so Stephanie and her team are working really hard, because now we know exactly, matter of fact, they just came in today, so we know what, what dollars we're getting, but we're not exactly sure how we will allocate those. But Stephanie knows that her plan that they're creating for the, for serving students instructionally is really going to be a three-year plan, because we're not going to be able to catch everybody up in one year. So we prioritize and then work on it. So we will supplement this, we'll use this money, but we will definitely supplement it.
Got it. Thank you.
India, I would also say that, from what I hear in the community, you know, as a grantor in the community, I think there's some real synergy, if I'm going to use a leader, leader in me word, behind more support for summer school than I've ever heard going forward, and what that looks like in terms of funding, I don't know. But I do think that our community, I think there's going to be resources available even beyond ESSA dollars, I think will, I think that, not just for the Waterloo schools, I think school districts in general are going to be hopefully helped and bolstered by the, the definite need that our community sees.
I know I'm maybe jumping the gun, and I apologize for putting more on your plate, but I know people are like, three weeks is not long enough. Yeah. Three weeks is just not long enough.
Yeah, we, 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 we agree. We actually started that conversation, and Stephanie said we could launch it the day after school gets out and have them go all the way up till the very beginning, and so we know that we, we have some ideas about how we're going to run that, but you are right. There is, the, the issue, though, really, that we're looking at, the barriers really, staff. Our staff, they're tired, and so we will probably be very creative in how we staff this. I think we might have some UNI students, there might be student teachers, there might be a variety of people that we can use, but we're going to have to supplement, because our staff probably, I mean, if Stephanie gets her plan, and we, we go all summer long, which I'm not announcing that for the media that's watching, because, sorry, oh my gosh, I heard summer, no, no, we don't, no, we don't, but, but we know the need is great, and so we just won't be able to have staff for that amount of days, and so we're just going to have to be super creative, and so that's where we're, that's what we're looking at right now, of what that. I, I would guess, Stephanie, do you have an idea what month we would be, I mean, it's going to take us a month or two, right, to get that plan together for summer school, or sometime?
March?
March, probably.
Before spring break, we'll know.
Somewhere around there. Yeah, yeah, well, because we have to, we put it out for staff to, or for staffing. Kingsley usually posts that, gosh, by April for sure, we're going to want to post that to make sure staff, we can get staff hired, and they have to do interviews and all of that to be ready to launch, so we kind of have a little roadmap. We, we back map how soon we need to have that ready, and so we're, we're working on it. This year is just exponentially difficult because of the number of students that we're going to need to work on, and we're, again, we're, we're not going to catch everybody up, we're not, I mean, this spring, we do have a lot of virtual students who haven't been doing well, who are coming back this week and next week, and so that is helping some, and we're, you know, so there's gap, the, the virtual students aren't the only students who have a gap, but there are some of them who haven't been, it hasn't been working very well, or they haven't been logging in the rest, so they're coming back, so that, that will help, but the, the need is great, so we've got, our work cut out for us, so.
How does the 3.7 million compare with last year?
Michael?
It's very close in dollar amount. I think the dollar value last year was $1.35 in tax rate. I think it was 3.6 million something. So it's very similar, because it's based on our enrollment and the, and the state cost per pupil, and if that only goes up 1% or 2%, then this number can only change by a small amount as well. Okay, got it. Thank you.
And I was just wondering, the SRO officers, is this fully funded by these dollars, the 350,000?
Yes, it is. And that would be the last three categories on the list there, all come out of the supplemental waiting, the 517,000, and everything above it is the modified allowable growth, the 3.7, plus the 25%.
Is it, I do have one question. The IJAG program, is that for salaries? What's, what's the basis of that amount?
Yeah, the, the IJAG program is for our portion of those programs, and we fund three teachers. It must be 22,000, 23,000 per teacher, so it's our portion of it, so that doesn't fully cover, that IJAG covers, their, their grantors cover the rest of it. So that would be the Carver staff member, and it's actually the, the cost of the program, but I think our portion goes toward the staff, but the Carver staff, the, the Carver program, and then the two programs at East.
Okay.
The, the freshman sophomore program and the junior senior program.
So this does go directly toward?
Yeah, I'm, I mean, we, we contribute that amount of money toward the total cost, and I suppose it, I mean, it probably goes to the staff, because that's the biggest portion of it, but, yeah.
I have a breakdown of that. I can probably give it to you, if you want to see what the, what the total cost of that program in Waterloo is.
And doesn't IJAG, then, they kind of set their own budget, I mean, they get funds, and then they set their own budget?
They're not our staff members there, but we are, we participate in the hiring process of them. We sit alongside them.
Thank you, Michael. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Lyle, did you have anything else?
No.
Okay, super. All right, then, all those in favor of approving the funding for the 2021-22 At-Risk Education Programs, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. The next item on our agenda is a human resources update. I will ask Kingsley Botsway to come forward on this. This is not an action item, but this is just for information only and some discussion.
Any questions?
And I believe we have a document at our board table here that, if anybody, if you all got it when you sat down, you can go through.
How about retirement?
Oh, yeah, so we, we're, we're still looking at those projections. We still have of those teachers there, you know, five teachers that are either thinking about resigning or retiring for the 2020, 2021 school year, at the end of it, but we're, it's still new. You know, we sent it out in December. We actually sent it out a little earlier than we normally do, but I think people are still, as we kind of saw with the, the stick and stay because of COVID, our numbers went down as far as our turnover. We may see something similar right now as well.
Well, and I saw on the agenda, like, a, a teacher had retired at semester.
Correct.
Are they included in the five, or those five additional?
They are included in the five.
Okay.
Is that number comparable to this time last year, with the five, or that kind of still early?
We, it was still early. It's still early. I mean, it's, again, it was different a little bit with COVID. We had, we had a lot of people that were waiting to see, well, not with COVID, but waiting to kind of give this information in general. I think you're going to see something happen similar, but now with COVID, just a lot of question marks for next steps.
Are all levels of staff able to participate in focus groups?
Yep. We actually spend a lot of time trying to reach out to our ASME group, our WSP. We try to balance it as much as possible, and we'll do the same this time. Virtual will help tremendously, I think, for getting people to participate.
How are things going with the clinic?
I was just going to ask.
It's going well. You know, we, we've seen a definite uptick of people that are participating or using the clinic, however it is COVID-related. A lot of it's been busy in the COVID-related. We're excited about Trish starting, and I think that, you know, her goal is not to take with a job away from our wellness coordinator, but to get out and about and meet people. I'm actually thinking about making her my provider as well, just because of the closeness and the cost, and it's, we're going to change some things in relation to our insurance as well, minimal things, but I really, we really want to push staff to this benefit. It's free. I've charged for many of our employees, except our HSA employees, and I think that she brings a really awesome demeanor. I was sitting on the interview with Erica. She's really good. It, I'm, I mean, if you get an opportunity to meet her, we may have something like that for the board. She's, she's East Thai grad. She's really excited to work here.
And I love the wellness coordinator, all of her messages and stuff. They're so great. I'm like, I needed that, so. I mean, they're really doing a great job.
Yeah, no, we're excited. It's been great.
And it does help that universities now open, so people can get to.
Yeah, that's what I just said, and universities finally.
Hopefully, hopefully that will boost our number.
Yes, absolutely. Does the clinic give, well, will they give vaccines there, or do they know yet?
We're starting, still trying to figure that out. We, they have, we've already taken the steps. We met with Unity Point, Karen and Luke, prior to, I don't know, it was early December, they already went ahead and got approval from the state to be a place that would give vaccine.
Okay.
Kingsley, can I go back to staffing and next year, as we look at new teachers, and this might, because, because I have a slightly vested interest in this myself, but, not myself, but for my family, are there programs, are there ways, I'm, I'm assuming we're going to need more new teachers, and I know we've done some kind of, I think, groundbreaking things with working on paying for the licensure for some of our parents, and are there any other programs that you foresee occurring that people, I'm just talking about our general public, and people who are interested in education, might need to look into if they are interested in perhaps teaching going forward as a career?
Well, you know, we're definitely still continuing with our Teach Waterloo program, and we've expanded that, not only to be the Teach Waterloo program, we have a second cohort happening as well, but there's also a Teach Waterloo program that's our own program, where we allow for our staff to sign an agreement and, and still get paid while they're going to get their education as well, and so.
Excellent.
It's not always two years. We have one person right now that is actually just doing it for student teaching.
Oh, okay.
And so, and then they will become Waterloo Schools teacher. So we're excited about, I, I don't, I think I mentioned this, but we're excited about, yeah, I put this here, we're just excited about the diversity, our focus on equity and diversity, especially, we've gone above and beyond trying to hire staff of color now, which will put us in a better position, even in COVID, or during COVID, excuse me, with our, our, our two members that are currently going through student teaching with the Teach Waterloo program, and the, just the general number of teachers of color that we get every year.
Well, and to echo that, I just think the grow your own, I mean, we, that's what we need, we need to have staff that reflects our student body population, and so the more we can do with those programmings, I think the better.
Absolutely.
So.
Just out of curiosity, because it's kind of cool, how did you end up getting hooked up with Lincoln University?
We had reached out to, I had reached out to them a long time ago, and they had said that, you know, that they weren't, they didn't have the diversity that you would assume on HBCU would have. They're a land-grant institution. Long story short, they're not your typical, like, North Carolina ANT or Howard. That being said, they still have a larger population of African-Americans that are a part of their college. And Joy came in and reached out again and spent a little bit more time pushing that contact, and we have a great relationship with Dr. Ayana Shivers, and they're planning on bringing students up here. We're, we're going through everything we can to make sure that we're diversifying, we're building those relationships, and we're, again, we're not only excited about continuing these agreements with HBCUs, but also with HSIs as well.
Okay, I love it, because, did you watch on, it was National Human Rights Day, the thing where, I'm having a blank, Nicole?
Oh, Hannah Nabel.
Yes, when, when she was doing the panel and was talking about, you know, just some of her concerns still about her hometown, which, you know, we all know, and they're all, they're always in our mind, but when she said them, I just felt this, like, deep embarrassment again, you know, and, and I just, every time you bring us stuff like this, it, it just kind of reinvigorates that, that we are not always going to be the Waterloo that we've been, and, and I think we've made huge strides, and so, yeah, I, I love that you're telling people about it, too.
Yeah, I mean, this is an opportunity to, you know, really showcase what we're doing right, and unfortunately, again, it's just, you know, it's kind of just, you know, for us, it's just being consistent and just, you know, working at it as much as possible, but with Joy, obviously, the members of the HR team, Tara, the media, and the work that they're doing to put together videos, to get out there further, we're reaching out in Florida, South Carolina, I mean, we're, we're putting a lot of work into recruiting in different ways, so we're excited. And again, love this opportunity, because we don't really share our stuff, but it's, it's a lot of work, but it's fun.
I think you heard us loud and clear. We need Joy to come sometime.
Sure.
So, in case you didn't hear me, I'm going to say it again.
Yeah, absolutely.
Love to, love to have Joy here. It doesn't have to be, you know, could be in February, March, whenever it works into her schedule, but I think we'd really love to hear from her.
Yeah.
She's got some great ideas, so.
Thanks for putting this together, Kingsley. I know we always pester you during your personnel adjustment period, which is not really the time to talk about it, so this is awesome.
Yeah.
So thank you for doing it.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. All right, I can, we can go ahead and move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Lindeman?
Great, thank you. First of all, I just wanted to give just one more thanks to McElroy Trust and to Cedar Valley Medical Specialists. I just, when you add the two McElroy Trust grants, I mean, you're at $8,500 almost of gifting, and then, of course, the, the large gift from Cedar Valley Medical Specialists tonight, and so I just, McElroy Trust has been a friend for a long time of the district, and so just grateful to them. Just a few comments on return to learn. I know at the next board meeting, I believe, we are doing a, an update on return to learn, so I'll just give you a few things, extra tidbits right now. So we are, we were watching very carefully the number of cases, as were many districts, that would happen after, after Christmas or after, after the New Year when we came back, and so we have been watching that really carefully. If you remember, at Thanksgiving, we shut down for a few days just because we weren't sure, and plus going into, into Thanksgiving, the numbers were so high, and so we didn't do that this time, just kind of, we had met with Black Hawk County, and they said they just really didn't recommend it at this time, and so we've been watching that. Right now, our numbers are, are quite low. We have 107 students out all total for COVID-related, and that's not only positive, but that's even the quarantining. So you add those all together, it's 107, and that's district-wide. So that's really quite low. We've certainly had numbers much higher at different times, especially right before Thanksgiving, so, and then we have 25 adults out, and that, you know, some of them are teachers, and some of them are other, any staff members, so, you know, we're running, that's, that's actually pretty good, and numbers this week have been really quite low, so I get a report at noon every single day on how many cases we've had from noon the day, the previous day to noon today, and so, you know, just, we're having, you know, one, maybe two. We had one day that we had zero recently, you know, zero new cases from the day before, and so we do monitor that very closely. We take it very seriously, so we have a, a full, I've mentioned this before, but if we get a positive, we get notification of a positive, most of the times we get that from the parents right away. We, if we don't get it from the parents, just shortly thereafter, we get it from Black Hawk County, so either way, everything gets double-checked, but we, we have a very, very meticulous contact tracing process that we use, and so, you know, going back to look at that, so, you know, we, we feel really good. I do meet with all of the other superintendents in Black Hawk County, not every week. For a while, we were meeting every week, more, it's, it's about every other Monday right now, and so our numbers are, are really actually quite good compared to some other districts across the state, and I would say in Black Hawk County, you know, they're looking pretty good right now. I just looked before I came down here, and we're down to 12.1 today, so. I just looked before I came down here, and we're down to twelve point one today, so dropping, not super fast, but it's definitely dropping, and it's way better, much better than the twenty-seven percent that we saw earlier a couple of months ago. So I think the public might be interested in this. I know our school staff got an email today at ten o'clock this morning. We sent out an email to all staff members in Waterloo schools, and every staff member, every education staff member in Black Hawk County got that same email at ten o'clock this morning. And so all districts, the Black Hawk County Public Health, had asked us to start gathering names of, of staff members who want to be, to get, to be vaccinated, COVID-vaccinated. And that's, we know that's two doses. And so what we don't know is when we would get those. We are part of, all educators are part of Phase One B. They're currently vaccinating as part of Phase One A. And so Phase One B will hopefully start sometime soon. We're really hopeful. But they asked us to go ahead and start getting the names because I think there's some, some, some speculation, I guess, that once they get the vaccines, that we would, we would need to get started within about a week. They may only get about a week's notice. And so we just want to be ready to go. So we're doing that. I did actually look before I came down, just because I thought somebody might be interested in it. The survey went out at ten o'clock this morning, and we had seven hundred and seventeen people fill it out instant. And we're, you know, right now, it's, can I say the percentage or, yeah, right now, we're running ninety-five point eight percent of the respondents did want the vaccine as part of our. It's not a Waterloo Schools initiative, it is a Black Hawk County initiative that we are helping to facilitate, just to make that distinction. So six hundred and eighty-seven out of the seven seventeen have asked yes for us to, to report their name, to pass it along to Black Hawk County, which we will do. So that's quite a few people to fill that out in one day, seven hundred and seventeen since ten o'clock, ten oh one, I think it went out. So it's, ten oh one. So we'll watch that over the course. They have, our staff members have until January twenty-ninth to complete that. So that, that's, and that's what everyone, every educator in Black Hawk County has, so. And that's public schools and private schools. So anyway, that's that. I mentioned a little bit ago, we are working with the, the virtual students. We're right at the semester, and so we have lots of students who are coming back, hundreds of students who are choosing to come back. I happened to be watching Facebook. I told Dr. Mohorn this today, that I was looking on Facebook, there's a parent virtual page for, a Facebook page for our parents who are working through virtual with their students. And so a parent on there had said, you know, I'm, I'm, my, I'm thinking about my child returning in person, has anybody done that? And so every single comment below it was very, very positive. Yes, we did it last week. Yes, we did it on December or whatever. So if parents do want that choice, you know, we certainly honor that people, that's not right for everyone, but if that is, you know, you certainly just reach out to us, we will help facilitate that. Matter of fact, there was one, I have to, I wish I knew who the student, the, the teacher was, but one of the, one of the parents said, with my, my student was quite apprehensive about just returning. And so the teacher said, why don't I just reach out to this mom? I'll just, I'll just, I'll just call you once a week, just to let you know how he's doing. And I thought, that's really great. And she said, I just look forward to those calls, and she's going to do it for the first month. So every week for four weeks, just to give that parent just a little bit of comfort. So I thought that was, that was great. So on a different note, legislative session kicks off right now, today, and the governor's address is tomorrow. So we will be watching that. That's tomorrow night. A lot of times it's during the day, but it's actually at night. So it's January twelfth at six P. M. And that will be televised on Iowa Public Television and on Facebook, so check that out. And then I did put it in the weekly update, but I think it's worth repeating, is that we had a, on Friday, Tara got to cover two great things. She did the Cedar Valley Medical Specialist donation, but also the IB World status. So we, our district, you know, it takes five years of success before you can be named as an IB World school, and both of our schools did go through that process. So I just really think that is a significant thing. There just really aren't that many IB programs in the nation, and there's just two in Iowa, and one of them's right here. And so I just, I think that's pretty fabulous. And I, I know the students were a part of that, the staff was a part of that, so I just really applaud them for going through that quite rigorous, quite rigorous process to be named as IB World. So congratulations to them. That's it for today.
Thank you. Okay, so my little cheat sheet says that I'm supposed to start with India tonight. I try to go back and forth on which side of the, of the dais I start.
I thought it was Lyle.
Start with board comments. Well, Lyle's not here, but he's, I'm going to give you time, time to talk, Lyle, don't you worry.
Um, I had a, just a comment. So though you put this survey out, vaccines are not mandatory, though, at this point. Okay? My question is, as we do have this transition and families are going from virtual to in-person, virtual will still be offered to families until?
Yeah, at the current time, they are still offered. And so the question is, you know, I, I mean, our anticipation is that they would be offered for the, you know, for the rest of the year. Now, what I'm, what I'm not going to say right now is that that is a hundred percent guarantee, I'm assuming, but I'm not, you know, I, I'm not prepared to answer that question tonight.
Okay.
So for the foreseeable future, for sure.
Okay. And I'm hopeful, just because there have been some comments and concern from parents who are, do have sick children, and they're like, we're just not ready.
I get it.
And the vaccine for children, as had been said, may not happen until next year. So just putting that out there. Do I have any other comments? Happy New Year, everyone. It's been like a long time since I've seen you guys, so it's great to be back doing the work and, yeah, that's it.
Thanks, India. Jesse?
No comments tonight.
Sue?
Well, I was just looking at the allocations that they sent out, and it, it's a lot of money. And so it is public, and Waterloo is a little over fifteen million. In perspective, Des Moines is over forty-one million. So it definitely, you know, correlates to your.
Sue, will you clarify who's given, where that money's coming from?
It's for the coronavirus second set of money.
The federal.
Yes, yeah, federal money, yeah. It's called what now?
ESSER.
ESSER instead of CARES.
And you can have an extra. Wait, do you remember what that is?
Yeah.
Michael, what's ESSER stand for? ESSER. Michael, are you still there? You might be muted.
I am here, but I don't remember what it stands for. That's what I always, that's why I always use the acronym.
Hang on a second. Go ahead, Kingsley.
Elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund.
Wow, okay. That's a mouthful.
Perfect.
Say that ten times, Pam.
But this is ESSER two, so it's just meaning that it's the second round of.
Second wave.
Of the elementary and secondary school emergency.
So have we gotten any guidelines and what that money can be used for?
Thursday at ten thirty, we have a webinar that we will, many of us will be going to. So we just got allocations today, and so the state is just sorting it out. I had a meeting last week, and at that time, they weren't even sure exactly how much the state was going to be getting. So now that that money is out, there's a lot of work to be doing, to be done over the next five days.
So I guess we really do need to be thankful that people are realizing federally, locally, state, metro, about the need to get our kids back in, in shape with all of this absence of learning and, you know, or breaks in learning and that type of thing.
And I think the money has to be used by, somebody help me, twenty twenty-three, Kingsley knows.
September of twenty-three.
September of twenty-three.
Thank you.
Which I think is good, to have an end time on that also, and, and that we need to get those programs implemented and get in there and get the kids back to where they should be, so. And on another note, I attended the East-West Girls Basketball Game, and shout out to both teams, and especially East High. They did not have anyone near even close to the height of some of the West High girls, and those girls fought and fought and fought. And I just thought, boy, good for you. You, you're in good shape, and you're, it was kind of like David and Goliath, I thought a little bit. So anyway, shout out to East High Girls Team, that both sides were excellent sports and, and just represented Waterloo well. So, thank you.
Thanks, Sue. Aster?
Well, I had two brief comments, and Dr. Lindeman hit on both of them, but I'll just say.
That's all right.
So I did get an opportunity to watch the unveiling of the IB World plaques for East, or I watched East, but for East and West. So congratulations to Sharice Wardman and that group on that IB World certification. And also, I'm often asked, do I like or enjoy being on the school board? And my comment is always the same, and there's nothing against or nothing with the, the board members. No, no, this is a good, this is a good comment. And it's, it's, the board celebrations, I think, as Shanley was pointing out, is, is by far the most enjoyable portion of being on the board, whether it's Partners in Education, the financial gifts that the district receives, those relationships and interaction with, with the people of the community, I think makes being on the board enjoyable. So I told you it was going to be good. You, you guys got nervous. But that's all my comments.
Thank you, Aster. Stacy?
To, to, to go with that, when I was a legal league coach and we got to come here, so as a, as a parent and a community member, coming to you guys is like the best thing to do, too. So those events are fun on both sides of the, the rail. So just two things. First, with everything that has been happening since twenty twenty-one began, we all thought, oh, great, twenty twenty's gone, thank God, and then twenty twenty-one's happened. Just smile to people, remember that we're all together, we're doing this together. Doesn't matter who you voted for, it doesn't matter. Don't push people away. We can only come together if we come together. So I hate reading all the stuff about the nasty stuff being said on both sides, and, and I think that we can do better. And a little girl that I do daycare for came home before break and told one of my kids that, did she know that Biden drinks baby blood? She's a second grader and was told this at school. So, I mean, we can't, this hate, it's got to stop, it's just on all sides. We just, they, that should have never gone in her ears. And then secondly, I'm really glad that we do have our, our, our curve flat with COVID. But flat does not mean gone. My cousin died Christmas Day morning. She was sixty-four. Her name's Peggy. She's married, she has two daughters. She was healthy and active and had no underlying conditions that would have led to that. So it's not just something that you're going to get the flu and you're going to get better. A lot of people, people die. So when I hear, like, virtual, kids are coming back, all I hear in my head is, that's great, but oh my gosh, kids are going to be sitting closer together. So like, we just have to be very sensitive to the radar of people, you know, that, we do know, it keeps going back and forth, our kids, if they're asymptomatic, are they spreaders? No, they're not. Yes, they are. We just have to proceed with caution, is all I ask, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy, and I'm sorry for your loss there. Lyle, are you still with us?
I am.
Awesome. I'm going to hold you, I'm going to put you up to the microphone, so sorry, I got you now. Go.
I just have one question, that is, how many, what's the population that the survey, the vaccine survey went out to? I think you said you had seven hundred and some responses, but that's out of how many?
That is out of all staff members in Waterloo schools, which is, for all intents and purposes, eighteen hundred-ish. So not quite half yet have responded in day one.
Okay.
You have a number?
That's still a tremendous.
Yeah, it is a tremendous response. It's, Kingsley, how many people?
Seventeen twelve.
Seventeen twelve, sorry.
Seventeen twelve, Lyle.